America's Town Meeting of the Air. America's Town Meeting of the Air welcomes you to Town Hall. Like the Town Meeting of old, we meet together each week to discuss our common problems. Men and women prominent in our national life and the voices of people throughout our land are heard every Thursday evening at this historic Town Hall in New York City. Tonight, the question is on the lips of everyone.
Has the New Deal promoted business recovery?
No, the New Deal has interfered with business recovery.
Business today is the best it's been since 1929.
Don't be fooled by separate signs. That hard business is worse.
Aren't more people working?
Ungovernment relief jobs, maybe. That's not business.
We had to prime the pump. We're still priming and getting nowhere fast.
Did the New Deal save business in 1933?
The emergency's over. Take off the phomodoro and let the patient breathe normally.
But he's not out of change.
Where does the answer lie? We have with us this evening two eminently qualified speakers to lead in the discussion of this subject. They will be presented to you by our moderator, Mr. George V. Denny Jr., originator and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air. Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. On the eve of what is likely to be one of the most important political campaigns in the history of our country, the League for Political Education and the National Broadcasting Company are attempting to bring back the early American Town Meeting to our political life. Questions of vital concern to every one of us must be decided before we cast our ballots next fall. We therefore bring together on this platform in Town Hall each Thursday evening two or more speakers on conflicting viewpoints to discuss these questions. Not in the spirit of conventional debate, but constructively and usefully in the interest of the welfare of the whole American people. Your response to these programs is ample evidence of your approval of this method of public discussion. Our question tonight is the all-important one. Has the New Deal promoted or retarded business recovery? Our speakers, Mr. Merwin K. Hart, President of the New York State Economic Council, and the Honorable Hugo L. Black, United States Senator from Alabama, both men of distinction in the economic and political life of this country. Following their addresses, there will be brief rebuttals, then questions from the audience. It is my pleasure and privilege now to present to you Mr. Merwin K. Hart of New York City, President of the New York State Economic Council. Mr. Hart.
Ladies and gentlemen, down to three years ago, America had been a nation of individualists. Free rein had been given to private initiative. Government had largely confined itself to the ordinary functions of government. Due to the American system of free enterprise, the country had developed, as is well-known, the highest standard of living for a larger proportion of the people than ever attained in any country at any time. In no other country in the world had private enterprise better serve the people. And thanks to private enterprise, as one illustration, there is a greater volume of endowment of educational and philanthropic institutions in the eastern states of America alone than in all of Europe together. But since 1933, the Roosevelt administration has thrown overboard the democratic platform and adopted a socialist-communistic program under the name of the New Deal. The administration passed from the theory that the people are masters and the state the servant to the theory that the state is the master and the people are merely the subjects. This, of course, is nothing but the same old European and Asiatic tyranny from which our ancestors fled to America in order to establish real freedom. And the question before us tonight is, has this New Deal promoted or retarded business recovery? Let us take a look at things as they were on March 4, 1933. There had been the vast over-expansion, which always takes place after a great war. And after the over-expansion, there came the inevitable depression. But the bottom of the depression, here and throughout the world, had been reached in June of 1932. The New York Times Index of Industrial Activity in that year, at that time, fell to 60 as compared with 117 in 1929. It recovered to 65 in November 1932, reflecting the fact that both party platforms pledged their candidates to a close adherence to the American system. In the 1932 campaign, for instance, Mr. Roosevelt said at Pittsburgh, I quote, "I regard reduction in federal spending as one of the most important issues of this campaign. In my opinion, it is the most direct and effective contribution that government can make to business," unquote. But during the winter of 1932, it became apparent that the president was wobbling in his loyalty to economy and to other American institutions. Senator Glass of Virginia is said to have refused the post of Secretary of the Treasury because of a growing fear that the president was prepared to go back on important campaign promises. Hence, the index of industrial activity fell to about 58. Apprehension became so great that in February, following withdrawal by depositors of gold from banks, a panic ensued which resulted in the closing about March 1 of all the banks in the United States. It was indeed a crisis. The new president, on taking oath, asked, however, and received loyal support from the people of the whole country. And then followed an astonishing series of enactments by Congress. The New Deal had begun. The country went off gold. The government seized all gold in the country, and having seized it, reduced the gold content of the dollar by 40 percent. The government repudiated its promises to redeem its bonds in gold, only a few weeks, in fact, after it had sold several hundred million dollars containing the expressed promise to redeem in gold. The government passed its NRA law, injecting itself into the intimate relations between employer and employee, thus erecting a state-made barrier where none had been before. Enacted the Agricultural Adjustment Act, under which the farmers had been told what to plant and when to plant it, under which millions of dollars of food was destroyed while people went hungry. The Tennessee Valley Authority was set up, which regardless of the fact that that area already had twice the developed power that it was using, proceeded to use the taxpayers' money to build dams that, when finished, would double the already existing excess. At first, the people did not sense the significance of these strange laws. They thought only of their support of the president. Enthusiasm over the New Deal reached its height with the various Blue Eagle parades, one of the largest of which took place in this city in the late summer of 1935. The employers of the country proceeded to employ more people and turn out more goods. And the people proceeded to buy more. Some bought from enthusiasm, some from patriotism, many because they foresaw higher prices later. A high peak of production was reached in July, the index rising to 89. And then, in spite of government valley-hoo and spending, little improvement was recorded throughout the country until June of 1935. Under seasonal influences, the index varied from a low of 67 to a height of 83. During that period, the hostility of government to business was steadily undermining the confidence of those several million people who are charged with the responsibility for the successful conduct of business. Let me enumerate some of the forces that killed confidence. One was the utter recklessness with which money was handed out. Federal spendings, including the president's estimates for 1935 and 1936, total 24 billion 200 million dollars, almost as much as the entire federal spendings in the 124 years prior to 1913, including the cost of all wars. Government adopted public works as a means of relieving unemployment, though experience had proven repeatedly that public works cost several times as much as ordinary means of relief. Only last week, the Democratic mayor of Pittsburgh, in the Saturday Evening Post, told of a relief sewer job which cost Pittsburgh $64,000, while the contract estimate on the job had been $18,000. And this is but a sample. Second, in spite of the failures of the past, government became obsessed with the idea of going into business in competition with private enterprise. The Tennessee Valley Authority is an example. In the third place, government systematically set out to discredit private enterprise and those engaged in it. The New Deal has shown itself to be against nearly all classes of business leaders, particularly public utilities and bankers. Of course, in these, as in all groups, a few men go wrong. But the administration, instead of punishing the wrongdoers, has set out to punish the entire industry. The government disclosed two apparent desires to control in intimate detail the lives of the people. Under the National Recovery Act, the government tried to fix the price for pressing pants in New Jersey and to force workers to join certain labor unions, whether they wanted to or not. In hearings and other proceedings under that act, it was obviously the government's theory that the employers alone were the ones who could be wrong, never the labor unions. The AAA has now set out to limit the quantity of potatoes that any farmer may grow. Under the Constitution, all legislative powers granted to the federal government are vested in the Congress. Yet the Congress has on many occasions in the past three years completely abdicated its functions. It has passed laws which have tended to overturn our whole economic system of government. When some of the officers of Congress admitted they did not even understand their contents. Thus, when the Public Utility Bill reached final debate in the House of Representatives last summer, the Speaker of the House, in urging support of the death sentence against the utility company, said, I quote, "I am not going to discuss the merits of this bill for two reasons. In the first place, I do not have the time, and I am frank to say that I do not know enough about the bill to discuss its merits." That from the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thus, it had become increasingly apparent in this period that the executive was engaged in subverting the American system, that as always has happened in the development of dictatorships, the legislative branch was weakly yielding to the executive, and that the executive, armed with the populations of billions for relief, was using these to quell opposition. Public confidence was low indeed. Americans saw England, meanwhile, stage a marked recovery, saw her tightening her belt and balancing her budget, saw the English people enjoy the greatest measure of recovery in the world today. And so things stood in late May 1935. Then the Supreme Court of the United States, by unanimous decision, declared the National Recovery Act to be unconstitutional. And in that decision, there participated, as you well remember, not only conservatives but liberals, if not even radicals. All agreed on that decision. The turning point had come. The people of the United States, in their dismay and bewilderment, had almost forgotten the Constitution, almost forgotten there was a Supreme Court. Courage began to come back. The people began to remember what the American system had been like, began to want to have it back, began to believe there was a possibility of getting it back. To be sure, the president, in his famous press conferences, predicted dire results, said the country had returned to horse and buggy days, but his fears proved groundless. The fact is unquestioned that real recovery in the United States dates from this overthrow of the NRA. Since that time, the courage of the business people has constantly increased, for there are growing indications that the man in the street, the average voter, is fed up with the New Deal. Thus, in the state of Rhode Island, in the fall of 1934, a New Dealer was elected to Congress by 20,000 majority, while in a special election in the same district last August, an anti-New Dealer, running on the single plank that he was against the New Deal, lock, stock, and barrel, was elected by more than 10,000. At the fall elections, the state of Pennsylvania voted 2 to 1 against amending the state constitution to permit New Dealism in that state. New Dealism was the one great issue in the New York Assembly elections recently, yet the anti-New Dealers, in the face of all of the federal patronage and the relief money spent or offered, elected a majority of 14 out of a total of 150 members. And last but not least, the Literary Digest poll, now in its third week, with the issue that appeared today, indicates that even in the West, where if anywhere some of the New Deal is supposed to be liked, 55 to 60 percent of the people are voting against it. And while one year ago, only 53 percent of the people favored the New Deal, at the present time, only 23 percent of the people favor the New Deal. To sum up then, a natural business recovery in the United States began in June 1932. Recovery was checked early in 1933 by suspicion that the president would go against certain campaign promises. Recovery was stimulated again in the spring and summer by early enthusiasm from Mr. Roosevelt, by patriotism. But from July 1933 to June 1935, recovery was definitely held back by growing and almost universal belief among businessmen that the New Deal meant the destruction of American institutions. The present growing confidence which has carried the index well-nigh to the high level of 1933 dates from the overthrow of the NRA last June. Other court decisions have likewise accelerated confidence. There is rising conviction that many other of the alphabetical agencies are going to be thrown out by the Supreme Court. And business folk are willing at last to venture forth, for they are confident that the alien monster that is the New Deal is headed for destruction at the hands of free American citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Thank you, sir. From the deep south and the great state of Alabama, a courageous young leader came to the Senate eight years ago. We've heard and read much about him. We are now greatly pleased to welcome him to Town Hall and America's Town Meeting of the Air, the Honorable Hugo L. Black, United States Senator from Alabama. Senator Black.
Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I came to you tonight with the intention of giving you a prepared speech. I have changed my mind. I desire to comment, to some extent, on the remarks that have been made. Particularly do I desire to comment at first upon the statement that the people are all excited about the Constitution, so excited that they want to go back to Hoover and 1928. I was here in November 1932. I had just come back from a speaking trip in the West. I stood up on one of your streets and saw hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of men and women waiting in a bread line to keep from starving to death. I didn't see them today. Three years have passed. And now, we are hearing all over the United States, great constitutional orations paid for usually at so much per oration. By people that know nothing at all about the fundamental principles underlying that great doctrine. Go back to 28. Go back to 32. Are you willing to go back to those glorious days? When 15 million people walked the streets and highways of America, begging for bread and business? That great business that they said you had to let alone, which neither Harding, Coolidge, nor Hoover had ever lifted one finger to control the press. Given absolutely free rein in the saddle, holding the bid in the mouth. Great and glorious resorts for 15 million people out of work, 30 million farmers not making enough to buy their daily bread and to buy suitable foods for manufacturers in New York City. Was that all? Where was business going? Every little independent merchant in America was being driven into the bankruptcy courts. The only business that was thriving in all of America was the bankruptcy courts themselves. I'll take it back. There were few others. Monopolies were. I heard this statement about the speaker saying he didn't know anything about the Wheeler-Rabbin Bill. Well, that is strange, because we've shown down there in the investigations that all the telegraph boys that were going around getting telegrams against it knew all about it. All the Aces knew all about it. All the other hard people that they sent around knew all about it. They sent their letters in by the millions, paid for, drawn from the people of this country who knew nothing about that bill. Then he says that that's one of the things that's destroying business. But he didn't tell you. He didn't mention the fact. One of those holding companies in one day wrote up its assets on its book 300 million dollars. He didn't mention the fact that that same holding company went out into a western state and bought the power plants in that state for 4 million dollars and immediately wrote them up to 28 million dollars to make the people pay that for their salaries. He didn't mention that. Ah, they talk about business going to the bank. There was no business in 1932. Of course, they were not making money then, some of them. It wasn't easy to make. You can't sell goods with 15 million people wholly and completely out of funds to buy, with 30 million farmers getting 5 cents for their cotton and 10 cents for their corn when they didn't burn it up, and 25 cents for their wheat, and wearing clothes instead of those manufactured in New York, taking the old sacks, fertilizer sacks, and washing them out and putting them on the children that went to school, the few days they were left to go to school, in those good old glorious days when business was let alone. No, my friends, the people of America will not forget. You can't let these paid patriots wave their flags about a Constitution that they interpret to suit their own desires and excite the people of America. Let's consider just for a moment what did happen. After those glorious days, I had an indictment gone up here to show you just what did happen from those old days when business was let alone. But I don't have to remind you of it. Your memories are not that short. The American people have not forgotten, and the American people will not forget in November 1936. Let's see what happened. When the president, the new president, went in, business was frustrated, business leaders were sick, they were begging with their hat in their hand. They were down there saying, "Give us more money. Give us more money." One of the very gentlemen who's made a speech for the last two or three days is connected with a company that has felt from this government millions of dollars in unjust subsidies that it denied by the selling of ships and borrowing money to buy ships, while taking their hand into the United States Federate to sustain those businesses. And they didn't say, in that instance, that the government ought to let business alone. You know when the government ought to let business alone? When it begins to help the poor man crudging along the street with ragged clothes on his back. When it begins to raise the price and the opportunity of the man who's working on the farm, following a mule from early morning until late at night. Then they get very solicitous about the Constitution and they say, "Let it alone." But all the time, when you look at most of the huge fortunes that have been built up in this nation, you'll find they came from the government itself. What was the first thing done? The banks were closed. Who closed the banks? Yes, who did close them? I'll tell you who closed them. They closed them from 1921 till 1932. During that time, 10,800 banks closed their doors in every state of this union and lost 5 billion dollars of the money of their depositors and their stockholders in this nation. I'll tell you who closed them. Then, when he came into power, he found that these gentlemen who said, "Let business alone." But I think there's a difference between business and the so-called leaders of business. You know, there's a big difference. I see here business leaders map New Deal war. That ought to be true, because surely business wouldn't do it. And then I pick up the New York Herald Tribune today, that great liberal paper that goes all over the world, championing the cause of the underdog and the oppressed. Always fair to each party's portion, particularly fair to the New Deal. And I find on the financial page this heading, "Factory smoke proves United States property, prosperity." And they then quote the statement of the gentleman who's been over the country. But then what they do, with a superb courage, with magnificent speed, the president of the United States proceeded to put those banks back on an honest, fair basis, and those that were entitled to do so were permitted to continue to operate. 2 billion dollars of money of the taxpayers went to sustain these businesses. That business itself was unable to operate, and they came with their hat in their hand to the city of Washington and asked for assistance. And had it not been for that assistance, many more millions of people in this country would have faced wreck and ruin and would have been thrown into the breadlines because the banking system was gone. Has anybody that can deny that? What was the next thing? What was the next thing? From 1920, when the farmer's income was 14 billion dollars under the reign of Harding, Coolidge, and Hoover, it came down until 1932, the farmer was getting 4 billion dollars. He couldn't live on that. If any of you know anything about it, you know that that meant starvation for the American farmers. You know that it meant that the people who sold them goods from the great city of New York could not continue to sell them goods. And you knew that it needed that, that the employees in those factories must be discarded, because without customers, you can't sell goods in America. Purchasers with money, that's the thing it operates. When they get to talking about reducing production, and the thing to do is to let business alone, and business will produce. Then this has been reducing production all the years, and it always will, unless it has customers with money. So these farmers had their income reduced to 4 billion dollars. What happened? By reason of the administration now in power, at this time, they will get this year practically 7 billion dollars.
Senator Black, I hope you don't mind, but at this point, we must pause for a station announcement. Back again in Town Hall, New York for a continuation of America's Town Meeting of the Air. The subject up for discussion tonight is, "Has the New Deal Promoted Or Retarded Business Recovery?" The Honorable Hugo L. Black, United States Senator from Alabama, will continue with his side of the discussion.
Two million homes of the people of America, farm and city, have been saved by this, by the legislation of this administration, through the Homeowners' Loan Corporation and through the federal land banks and other agricultural banks. Two million homes. Under the old administration, when we were letting business alone, two hundred thousand were foreclosed each year. Two million of them have been saved. Do you think that's good for business or bad for business? Is that what the Constitution flag waivers are worried about? Is that what's un-American? I think it is. That's what they think. It must be un-American because they said the program was un-American. Is it un-American to raise the income of the American farmer so that he and his family can live in decency and in comfort? Is it un-American to raise the wages of the people in this country and shorten their hours? And that was done. They say that's un-American. The thing to do is to let them alone and let business do it. Well, business will do it, just as it always has done it. If you leave business alone. How did, what else did this administration do? It came and asked and received legislation which gives to the free-born citizens of this country right to gather together and bargain for themselves like free men in a free republic. Is that un-American? Is that un-American? Every step that has been taken, there's the so-called gentlemen, the leader, who are going to destroy it. The men who stay behind the scenes and who direct what shall be done by those they hire to put out in the front. They are the ones who have dared to declare that un-American along with the others. And they fought this administration every step of the way in that activity. And they say that we're ruining, we're raising taxes. It's true that taxes have been raised. But who got the benefit of it? The income of this nation was sixty, sixty, was forty billion dollars in nineteen hundred and thirty-two. It has been raised now. Until since that time, the national income has increased thirty mil- billion dollars. It's necessary now for me to close. But I'll tell you what raised that thirty billion dollars before I quit. Thirty billion dollars was raised because the government of the United States invested money to supplement business. When business failed and laid down on the doorstep and whined at the federal door of the federal government, it came along and raised the values of every man, woman, and child.
Thank you, Senator Black. Well, Mr. Hart, I don't believe you're going to quite agree with the senator. But before the question period, we'll be glad to hear from you again. Mr. Hart.
Mr. Simon, the next time I am offered the opportunity to debate with Senator Black, I hope that you'll fix two hours in the period. Because I can see that Senator Black needs to learn something about the private enterprise of this country. Something he does not know. As I've listened to these furious attacks on business at the hands of Senator Black, I am amazed. I wonder if Senator Black, for instance, just to pick out one single kind of private enterprise, has ever had occasion to compare the telephone service in this country, and I have no interest in the telephone company excepting to pay my bills if I can on time, compare the telephone service in this country, which is one of the most magnificent exhibitions of private enterprises in the world, with that of any other country. My service is so far ahead of that of other countries that there simply is no second. Now, the senator has said that when he was here in New York several years ago, he saw breadlines. And now he says you don't see them anymore. Well, what's happened? Why are these four unemployed people have been taken from one place and they've been put down in another place? And they're there just to stay. And here we have the phenomena after all these wonderful things that Senator Black says that he and the administration have been doing down in Washington for these unemployed. We have the remarkable situation that we've got almost as many unemployed today as we had then. And the peak of the cost, the peak of the cost has been reached and passed. Now, I want to say this, ladies and gentlemen. After all, while what the senator said took my mind off the subject, we are debating the question. We are debating the question at the present time as to whether the New Deal has promoted or retarded business recovery. I don't think the senator gave much attention to that. But I want to quote from some correspondents here before I sit down. Some correspondents had between Mr. Roy W. Howard of the Scripps Howard Company and the President of the United States last September. Mr. Howard, who certainly no one can suspect of being against the President, wrote and said in his letter in part, "Any experienced reporter will tell you that throughout the country, many businessmen who once gave you sincere support are now not merely hostile, they are frightened. Many of these men, whose patriotic patriotism and sense of public service will compare with that of any man in political life, have become convinced and sincerely believed," and then follows certain things, I'll just read one, "that there can be no real recovery until the fears of business have been allayed through the granting of a breathing spell to industry. And a recess from further experimentation in the, till the country can recover its losses." And I have here the reply of the President of the United States in which, after a long-winded dissertation on the subject in general, he agrees that there will be a breathing spell and in no place in the whole thing, whole letter, does he deny what is said by Mr. Howard. My time is up and I regret very much I was called.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Now we have three minutes more for Senator Black before we have the questions. Senator Black.
I'm very glad to note that my friend desires that I learn something about business. Ah, I've tried to learn something about business because I thought if I did, according to the way business was run up to the time of nineteen hundred and thirty-two, when it prostrated this country and collapsed all, everything that was in this nation, practically destroyed the banks, destroyed everything else that we had, and took away the purchasing powers of people and sent them out hunting for bread and begging for food and hunting for clothes out in the chivering colds. I have an idea. But so far as the statement is concerned, this administration is not an enemy to honest, legitimate business that is content with a fair, decent profit and doesn't spend all of its time and divert, divert all of its energy and waste a large part of its money in lobbying against every kind of legislation that's for the interests of the people of America. The chief beneficiaries of this program have been these very business people. Today, when business has come back and when they know it's come back and when they don't even dare stand up and say it hasn't come back. Today, they try to shift around and say, "Yes, it's come back. We made it an issue in nineteen hundred and thirty-two. We said then the grass would grow all over your streets and up through the sidewalks and we knew that the administration would have something to do with it. But now that the administration has come into power and the business has prospered, business is better. Now we are making some money and we want bigger salaries and bigger bonuses and more extortionate profit. Now we're gonna deny. We're absolutely gonna deny that the law had anything whatsoever to do with it." And the chief beneficiaries of this program have been these very gentlemen who are wailing and howling the loudest. They remind me of that old story, which is very ancient, of the lion that was lying there with a throat, with a bone stuck in his throat. And he was begging everybody to take it out and a stork came along. And he asked the stork to take it out. It was, the lion was suffering from it. He thought he was gonna die. And finally the stork put his head down in his mouth, pulled out the bone. And then he stood back and says, "What are you gonna do? Are you gonna help me any for this?" And the lion showed his teeth and says, "Why, anything that can stick its head in a lion's mouth and not get it bitten off ought to be satisfied and ought not to ask any more than that." And that's the situation that exists today. If these gentlemen would show the proper gratitude and start to work and stop whining and stop talking about ganging up to defeat the administration, just as sure as you live the people of this country in November nineteen thirty-six by the most overwhelming vote that has ever been cast in American history, is gonna march to the polls and enthusiastically send Franklin D. Roosevelt right back to the White House.
Well, I just wish our friends in the radio audience could enjoy this as much as you seem to be enjoying it tonight. This is getting to be a regular town meeting. And incidentally, before we take your questions, here's a telegram that has come in from Sheffield, Alabama, from a group of people who apparently listen regularly to these meetings. They have two questions for Senator Black. The first question. Senator Black, why is it the TVA Act calls for operation of nitrate plants at muscle shoals for farmers of the nation? Plants continue idle and millions of dollars in nitrate fertilizer is being imported that can be made here, giving employment to American labor? That's question number one. Question number two. Question number two. Why has TVA violated Act by locating principal offices at Knoxville, Tennessee instead of muscle shoals? Signed, Town Hall Listeners, Farmers Union Muscle Shoals Local 252, by Harry J. Frahn, F.R.A.H.N. Senator Black.
Mr. Moderator. Both of those questions, of course, could be answered much better by the Tennessee Valley Authority than they could by me. And in addition to that fact, I fear that the people of New York and the nation would not be vitally interested in whether we have the headquarters at Knoxville or Muscle Shoals. Frankly, frankly. Per- personally, personally, I tend to ask it personally. While I do not know what the Tennessee Valley Authority is going to do, I have endeavored, I have endeavored for about a year and a half to get them to come on down to Muscle Shoals in the greatest state of the Union down in Alabama. And I sincerely hope they're going to do so. With reference to the, with, to the operation of the nitrate plant, ah, there has been some fertilizer manufacturers. I hope there will be a great deal more. I personally am strongly in favor of that and have urged that that be done. One of the things, however, that is holding up everything here, that the power companies have filed suits of every kind and character all over the nation. And as soon as the Supreme Court comes along and renders the right decision, I hope they're gonna manufacture just all the fertilizer that we could use in the South and come right on down home where they ought to be at Muscle Shoals.
Now, Mr. Hart has just told me that he had a question he wants to ask the senator. Mr. Hart.
Senator, just this question. Having in mind the political prediction that you made just before you sat down from your rebuttal, namely that there was going to be a great flowing of the voters to the polls and an overwhelming endorsement. An overwhelming endorsement of the policies and principles of the present administration. How do you reconcile that with the returns in today's Literary Digest when a four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand ballots, fifty-six percent almost, have voted against the Roosevelt policy? Most of them from the South and West.
Senator Black.
I don't reconcile it at all and I don't care anything about reconciling. What I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is that the people of this country, North, South, East and West, have not forgotten and they will not forget the days of Hoover prosperity. And his satellite can't take the people back to them with all the Literary Digest polls to the contrary notwithstanding.
All right, now, questions from the audience. Questions limited to twenty-five words. Please stand, state your name and the person to whom your question is directed. Question.
Question first, answer to Mr. Hart.
Answer to Mr. Hart.
You, sir, have utilized the Laysay Fair as ministrations. Do you consider the culmination of those achievements in March nineteen thirty-two something to be proud of?
Mr. Hart, do you consider the Laysay Fair of nineteen thirty-two something to be proud of?
Culmination? Yes.
I think it, sir, you mean March nineteen thirty-three. Ah, I would say that I don't consider that what happened between June of nineteen thirty-two, when the bottom was reached, and March of nineteen thirty-three as the result of Laysay Fair. I think it was the result of the most active work on the part of the president-elect, getting ready to throw his party platform overboard.
Yo, your name? Kelman? Mr. Kelman, take the line in the yard. Mr. Kelman to Mr. Hart.
During the Hoover administration, when the war veterans went to Washington, I wonder if you remember how Mr. Hoover greeted those veterans with bullets? And I want to say that that will be now in history as one of the blackest acts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't take advantage of the opportunity we are giving you, sir. We are giving you an opportunity to ask a question, not make a speech. Next question. All right.
Mr. Hart.
Yes?
Which do you consider the greater evil? Economic control by a democratic government or by a autocratic business system?
Which do you consider the greater evil? Democratic control by the people or autocratic control by business?
I don't think that the alternative is necessarily between the two. And I deny that the business of this country had been under autocratic control by business, by, ah, that the government of this country had been under autocratic control by business, excepting possibly in here and there some rare instances. I want to say this too. While there were illustrations, unfortunately, there were exceptions. Yet I want to say I believe that you have got among the business people of this country, and after all, there are millions of business leaders employing from one or two up to a hundred thousand or more people, you have got patriotism equal to any that you can find in this land.
Mr. Simmons to Mr. Hart.
Mr. Simmons to Mr. Hart.
Talk of the recovery in England. How many unemployed do they have in England? And how much? how much higher are their taxes than ours?
How many unemployed have they in England, and how much higher are their taxes than ours?
The last figures I saw on unemployment in England about two weeks ago showed two million unemployment there, two million men unemployed. Uh, as to taxes, the answer is interesting. Taxes in England are about ninety-four dollars per capita. Taxes in the United States at the present time average about seventy-five dollars per capita. But if we were taxing the people for the deficits at Washington, taxes would be over a hundred dollars per capita in this country, and would exceed those in England.
A lady has a question.
Mrs. Bromdale to Senator Black.
Mrs. Bromdale to Senator Black.
If you, Senator Black, please, in fact, and not with romance and drama, why the United States, that prior to the world's degression, admittedly has the greatest per capita wealth and prosperity of any nation in the world, today lags so far behind in recovery, other nations that did not have the New Deal.
Why? In brief, I think the lady wants to know why the United States, which was so great in terms of prosperity in nineteen twenty-nine, now lags behind other countries that did not have the New Deal.
I should be glad to answer that. In the first place, I do not admit the assumption contained in the question, but conceding it for the purpose of answering the question. I shall answer it in this way. The United States is the most backward nation on earth up to this time, with reference to unemployment insured, with reference to taking care of its sick and its aged. It is the most, it is the most backward nation on earth, with reference to those great social legislations, which have added to the happiness and comfort of those countries that have adopted it. It, it is further true that the, the country of England to which reference was made, has for a long, long time, recognized the right of selective bargaining on the part of the workers of that nation, and the result has been that they have been able to gather together and obtain for themselves, as the records show, in that country and others, a greater percentage of the total wealth produced in the nation. And there is a smaller concentration of wealth in the hands of a few favored individuals, who have a nice, huge fortune, so large that they have taken it out of the capital of the country, and are not able to use it in employing people, because the people themselves cannot buy goods. And I would answer that the chief reason if this country has lagged behind is, we have permitted an unfair and an unjust concentration of the wealth produced by the people who work in the afterbeat.
Mr. Ferguson to Senator Black. Mr. Ferguson to Senator Black.
Senator Black, in your opinion, where is the New Deal heading for, right or left?
Senator Black, where is the New Deal heading for, right or left?
I think the New Deal is heading just like it has always headed, in the right direction for the people of the nation.
Mr. Pierceley to Mr. Senator Black.
Mr. Ben to Senator Black.
Senator, do you believe that a man who plants potatoes and grows more than five bushels and tells the government it's none of his, it's, um, it's, that he should go to jail?
Mr. Senator, do you think it's, uh, um...
Do you think a man who plants as many potatoes as he wants to and tells the government that it's his business, he should go to jail?
Well, it depends largely on whether they're good potatoes, like we grow down in Alabama.
Senator, I think I want you to speak more to that question. Ms. Wilson to Senator Black.
Senator Black, if England had paid their war debt, wouldn't our taxes be lower here?
If England had paid a war debt, wouldn't our taxes have been lower here?
Well, to the extent that, uh, the debt would have taken care of the necessary expenses naturally, uh, we would have had lower taxes. The same thing is true with reference to the payments from the other countries. And it's interesting in that connection to know that we paid twenty-five billion dollars for a war, which killed a great many people.
Well, is it fair to compare our taxes then with England, if they're owing all that money that restricts us out?
Is it fair to compare our taxes with England, if they're owing us all that money?
Well, I, I agree with you fully that they, that enters into the question. And, uh, I'm very hopeful that England will reach the conclusion sometime that they ought to pay us what they owe us.
Five-year-old Senator Black.
What's that?
Five-year-old Senator Black, if these things are an intelligent function of a government, that's supposed to be by of and for the people to curtail crop production, when literally millions are starving for food, and also no telling, when we are liable to have a few years of famine and not having food on hand, maybe the entire population might starve.
Senator Black, is it fair for the government to curtail crop production?
In that connection, I might say that it would seem that what is fair for industry would be fair for the farmers. And it is true, in that connection, that industry has voluntarily curbed its production, and declines to manufacture a single suit of clothes for you, unless you yourself are able to get a job from industry or somebody else and buy them. And they have been curtailing production all through the years. Now with reference to the crops, uh, the crops were so plentiful, and the price was so low for corn, that they took the corn and burned it instead of fuel. That was one method of destroying the crops. Down in my section of Alabama, when cotton got down to four and five cents a pound, the farmers plowed it under, because it was too cheap to pay them for the trouble of picking it, and they were unable to secure the labor to do it, so that they could get a reasonable profit. That cotton for reduction, which has occurred, has not deprived a single man, woman, or child in America of a cotton garment for the reason that we still have an overwhelming surplus of cotton, which cannot be sold. And if you want the proper answer, let this administration proceed, as it has started to raise still further the, the wages of the men who work, and the prices of the farm product, so that instead of having to curtail any production, we will have a well-distributed income, which enables the people to buy the things they need.
Friends and neighbors, we have heard two earnest, sincere, patriotic, American citizens express two widely divergent views on this question. In the spirit in which they discussed it, let us continue our discussion today and the day after. About the only protest we've received during the past few weeks has been from people who complain that the hour between nine-thirty and ten-thirty on Thursday nights is too short. We are very glad to have that kind of complaint. I wish I had time to read even brief excerpts from the many fine letters that have come to us from both the seen and the unseen audience. Through those, we know that the American people are thinking earnestly and profoundly about their problems. If we do not answer your letters promptly, please understand that we are doing the best we can with the facilities at our disposal. Mr. Brilla.
Well, next we want to tell you that all those who would like printed copies of tonight's broadcast, that by arrangement with one of America's foremost publishing houses, copies are available at the nominal cost of ten cents. You will write directly to the League for Political Education, Town Hall, one-hundred-and-twenty-three West Forty-third Street, New York City. Next week at this hour, the subject for discussion will be Personal Liberty and Modern State. Dean Howard Lee McBain of Columbia University will lead the discussion, and he will be assisted by Mr. Roger Baldwin, Mr. Lawrence Dennis, Dr. Henry Pratt Fairchild, and Lena Madison Phillips. This is the National Broadcasting Company.